Cindy, are we ready then?
Yes, I've begun recording.
Okay. Do you want to conduct the roll call?
We have member Rick Wickencamp.
Present.
Member Brent Bryant.
Present.
Member Eric Winger.
Present.
So you have your quorum.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. For the record, Bob Teener cannot be here today. And I'm Rick Wickencamp, Assistant Director of Development Services. And I'm Mr. Teener Designee, and I'll be chairing this hearing. Also with me today is Brent Bryant, Finance Director, and Eric Winger, Public Works Director. I will also note that board members can ask questions at any time during this hearing. So the city encourages participation in the public meeting from the residents of Oklahoma City. City Council chambers closed, and the only alternative to participate in the meeting is by zoom/prime.gov. Please listen carefully for the instructions on how to access the meeting and how to request to speak during this hearing. To speak on the matter before this board, citizens and residents were encouraged to place a call no later than 9:00 a.m. in advance of the meeting. 2405-423-2617, or email Megan, M-E-A-G-A-N dot Armstrong, A-R-M-S-T-R-O-N-G at OKC.gov in advance of the hearing. If you wish to speak, include your name and the reason you would like to speak. For example, whether you're representing the applicant, or if you're wanting to protest. If connections are lost, the city will attempt to restore communications for a maximum of 30 minutes. And if the communications cannot be restored, the meeting will reconvene at a certain date and time and place, to be determined. If you are disconnected, please try a call again before calling 405-423-2617, or emailing Megan Armstrong at OKC.gov. As the policy of the city of Oklahoma City ensure that communications with participants and members of the public with disabilities are as effective as communications with others. Anyone with a disability who requires an accommodation, a modification of policies or procedures, or an auxiliary aid or service in order to participate in this meeting should contact 42405-423-2617 as soon as possible, but preferably at least 48 hours in advance of this hearing today. The department will give primary consideration to the choice of auxiliary aid or service requested by the individual with disability. So based upon an investigation, it was determined that ComConDIF failed to strictly comply with the provisions of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code 2020, relating specifically to the business covered by a license to operate a massage establishment. ComConDIF's license was revoked based upon the facts and reasons set forth in the letter to her dated February 24, 2021, given notice of revocation and a right to a hearing. Chapter 26-19 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code 2020, cause for revocation or suspension provides in relevant part as follows. Paragraph one, failure of the licensee or permittee to strictly comply with the provisions of this code relating specifically to the person, business, activity, device, or machine covered by the permit or license. Paragraph two, failure of the licensee or permittee to substantially comply with all provisions of this code for the regulation and maintenance of the public order, welfare, peace, health, or safety. In the letter to ComConDIF, further stated forth the provisions of Chapter 28-77 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code 2020 related to indecent conduct, which provides that paragraph A shall be unlawful for any person conducting a massage to place his or her hand or hands upon, to touch with any part of his or her body, to fondle in any manner, or to massage a sexual or genital area of any other person. And paragraph D, it shall be unlawful for any person owning, operating, or managing a massage establishment, knowingly, to cause, allow, or permit in or about such massage establishment any agent, employee, or any other person under his or her control or supervision to perform such acts prohibited in subsections A, B, or C of this section. So Chapter 26-23 of the code sets out the duties of the License Appeals Board. Paragraph I, Section A, a hearing, the License Appeal Board shall provide an orderly and fair procedure. The licensee or permittee shall be fully apprised of all the claims against him or her and the evidence to be considered, and shall have the opportunity to examine witnesses, inspect documents, and offer evidence and explanation or rebuttal. So with that, I will turn it over to City of Oklahoma City. I don't know whether Mr. Brummett or Ms. Douglas Tally will proceed with the city.
It will be Dan Brummett.
Okay, thank you.
Dan Brummett, and I would like to call Megan Armstrong. Megan?
Yes, sir.
How are you employed?
I am the supervisor over the license team for the city of Oklahoma City.
Is it your responsibility to issue licenses for massage establishments?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask you, do you have the book in front of you of exhibits?
Yes.
I'd like to look at it under tab one.
Yes, sir.
And tell us what that is.
Well, this is the information that we were given by the customer for King's Spa for application for a massage license.
And who was the applicant?
ComConDIF.
If you go to tab two and explain what that is.
This is the actual license that was issued with an expiration date of August 26, 2021.
That was issued to Ms. ConDIF?
Yes, sir.
Look at tab three and ask if you can identify that.
This is the recommendation for revocation for King's Spa from the Oklahoma City Police Department.
And if you look under the boxes for license revocation reasons, there are two that are checked. Would you read those, please?
The first one, number one, failure of the licensee or permittee to strictly comply with the provisions of the municipal code or other laws relating specifically to the person, business, activity, device, or machine covered by the permit or licensee. Number two, failure of the licensee or permittee to substantially comply with all provisions of the municipal code for the regulation and maintenance of the public order, welfare, peace, health, or safety.
Very good. Is that the reason why you revoked the permit?
Yes, sir.
I'd like for you to turn to tab four. Excerpt from the municipal code. If you go down to Section 26-9, cause for revocation or suspension, and read one and two under that.
Okay, one second, please. Which section, Dan? I'm sorry.
Section, down to bottom, Section 26-19.
Okay.
One and two.
Cause of revocation or suspension, sorry. Number one, failure of the licensee or permittee to strictly comply with the provisions of this code relating specifically to the person, business, activity, device, or machine covered by the permit or license. Number two, failure of the licensee or permittee to substantially comply with all provisions of this code for the regulation and maintenance of the public order, welfare, peace, health, or safety.
And number 26-19 too, that's the reason why you revoked the license again, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask you to look at under tab six.
Yes, sir.
Photograph of Ms. ConDIF.
Yes, sir.
And that's who you issued the license to, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's all the questions I have. Counsel, it's your witness.
I have no questions at this time. We reserve the right later on.
Certainly. Does the board have any questions?
I do not.
I do not have Megan either, thank you.
I do not, thank you.
The next witness that the city will call is Kenneth Wagner. Officer Wagner? Are you there? You may be muted. Hello, Officer Wagner? You may be muted.
Dan, I'm not seeing a Wagner on the number of people that are all the attendees here.
Well, we'll go down to Officer Terry Hy then.
Dan, there was a conference room in view earlier. There might have been those officers. So Cindy can bring that back up or not.
It was. Wesley Booth is the next witness. There they are. Okay.
Do we have all of them? Megan?
All three of them. Lieutenant Kimberlin is not here, but the other three are all in that same room.
Okay.
Wes, can you guys hear us? We can't hear you. Mr. Wickencamp, they are unmuted.
Okay, I think this would fall under the loss of communication. So I think we need to see if you can reestablish.
I'm going to try to get a hold of them real quick.
I hear now that he doesn't have his cameras off and his sound is off, Wes Booth.
About Wagner.
No.
Hi.
No.
Rivera?
No.
That's good, I can hear.
Mr. Booth, can you try your camera and your voice check? They're trying to fix the audio settings right now. Something was, hang on one second.
Mute yourself. They're working on it, testing. Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Well, I'll turn your phone on. Now can I hear you?
Yes.
Can you guys, okay, all right, good. All right, this is Kenneth Wagner.
Okay. Officer Wagner, how are you employed?
I'm an detective with the Oklahoma City Police Department, assigned to the vice enforcement unit.
How long have you been assigned to the vice enforcement division?
Approximately one year.
And are you familiar with an establishment known as the King's Spa?
Yes.
And how did that come to your attention?
I entered the business twice in an undercover capacity as part of an ongoing investigation into prostitution allegations.
And you did an investigation of that establishment?
Yes.
And what were the results of your investigation?
The first incident was on August 17, 2020. At that time, while posing as a customer, an employee named Jean Medina attempted to masturbate me for money. And ComConDIF is actually the one who took my money when I entered the business. The masseuse in question, Jean, was wearing lingerie, which is not consistent with a typical massage business. And in addition to the attempted sex act, she also did not have a state massage license. So at that time, Jean Medina was placed under arrest for offering to engage in prostitution and for attempting to massage without a state massage license. The second incident was on January 19, 2021. Again, I entered the same business, and it's located at 1612 Southeast Grand Boulevard in Oklahoma City and Oklahoma County. At that time, again, ComConDIF took my money, led me to a massage room. And at that point, a masseuse named Sun Chung, I apologize if the pronunciation is incorrect, provided a massage, and at the end of the massage, she verbally agreed to provide masturbation in exchange for an additional $40 that I gave her. So I gave her $40, and she clarified both verbally and through pointing that she was going to masturbate my penis. At that point, she was placed under arrest for offering to engage in prostitution. She was also found to be in violation of the Massage Therapy Practice Act by not having a state massage license.
Good. And what was, how was that disposed of, those citations?
They were actually state charges, and they were filed with the district attorney's office. I don't know where they are as far as the adjudication process now. I haven't been contacted in reference to preliminary hearings or anything.
Very good. That's all the questions I have. Counsel, it's your witness.
Mr. Booth, Richard Mildred, and I'm counsel for the applicant. On the first one, you said it occurred October 17 of 2020, is that correct?
No, it's August 17 of 2020.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, thank you. And the masturbation, who was conducting that activity?
It was attempted by the arrested party, Jean Medina, the masseuse in lingerie.
Okay. And she was, I want to make sure I get this correct. She was arrested, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do you know what's happened to her? Was she convicted, or was it just an arrest?
At this point, as far as I know, it was an arrest. I haven't received any follow-up contact from the district attorney's office pertaining to the court case. I'm not sure. I could look on OSN if you would like.
I'm just trying to find out, I'm just concerned about what's happening up to today.
Yes, sir.
And on January 19 of 2020, is that correct?
It's actually 2021. January 2021.
And tell me what happened again.
Again, entered the business, ComConDIF took my money, led me to a massage room. A Sun Chung provided a massage, at the end of which she agreed to provide masturbation in exchange for $40.
Did she agree to? Did she actually conduct that activity?
No, sir. But once the verbal arrangement was made, that's what violated the state statute, therefore the case was made.
I'm just asking the question of whether she conducted it or not, and I guess your answer is no.
No, she did not touch my penis.
All right, and and the activity with Ms. ConDIF, was that just, was she just collecting the money, is that correct?
Correct. The door is locked to go into the business. She greets customers, takes the money, lets them in, checks their temperature, and leads them to a massage room.
And obviously, she didn't conduct any of the actual activities, is that correct?
She did not provide a massage, sir.
I have no further questions.
Are there any questions from the board?
Chairman, I've got a couple of questions for Officer Wagner.
Yes, sir.
Officer, on the violation that occurred on 8/17 of 20, you mentioned that the masseuse was wearing lingerie, correct?
Correct.
And with the wearing of the lingerie, would you agree that that was not a fully opaque covering, covering her areas, her genitalia, genitalia areas?
I don't recall seeing her genitalia. I just remember it being inconsistent with the typical massage practice.
Would you say that the lingerie was not fully opaque?
By opaque, you mean it was not see-through? It was, we have pictures. I don't have the pictures in front of me, so to recount exactly how the lingerie looked.
The reason for my questions is I'm just looking specifically at the municipal code and just trying to make the trying to just be sure that I'm reading the code correctly with the report. So I'm just asking those for that purpose.
Yes, sir.
On the second incident on 11921, was that masseuse wearing lingerie?
No, sir.
I don't have any additional questions, thank you.
I have no questions, further questions?
I'd like to call Officer Rivera.
Excuse me, I was still hitting my mute. I did have a question.
Sorry.
So Officer Booth, is that correct?
Actually, Wagner was the one that was just speaking.
Okay, I'm sorry. Officer Wagner, I'm sorry. So if I understood, on the incident on August 17, 2020, you gave your money to Ms. ConDIF, and then she took you back to the room, and there was no further payment, is that correct?
Correct.
But then on January 19 of 2021, after you got back to the room, you paid an additional $40 for the supposed sex act, is that correct?
That is correct.
And who did you pay that money to, the extra $40?
I paid it to the masseuse, Sun Chung.
Okay. And then back on the August 17 incident, and I think Mr. Winger was asking about this, is lingerie the normal attire that you would encounter in a massage parlor? Is that, is that, is that, is the attire set by a code or statute? Or is it kind of a professional standard that's used?
It's a professional standard that is used. And also, I need to stipulate on the August 17 incident, I'm going over my report now. In addition to offering to provide masturbation, she also offered to provide oral sex. I don't know if that's relevant to this, but I just wanted to make sure that was also.
Okay.
You know, it's, as far as I know, no state statute associated with the attire worn by a masseuse. It's just that it's not consistent with what we typically find in a professional massage establishment.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have no further questions at this witness.
I'd like to call Officer Rivera.
Yes, sir, it's Detective Rivera.
Say your name for the record, please.
Investigator Alonso Rivera.
And how are you employed?
I'm an investigator with the Oklahoma City Police Department.
And how long have you been so employed?
Say again. I've been employed with the Oklahoma City Police Department for 18 years.
And how long with the vice unit?
I've worked in the vice unit for approximately eight years. Currently assigned to another unit.
And are you familiar with the establishment, massage establishment known as King's Spa?
Yes, sir.
And why, how did that come to your attention?
We've conducted several prostitution-related investigations at that establishment.
Did you do an investigation of the establishment?
Yes, I did.
And what were the results of your investigation?
Went in to the establishment on September the 6th of 2017 in an undercover capacity. Asked for a, I believe it was a one-hour massage. Made contact with the owner, who was the, I guess, the host or the recipient of the individuals going into the establishment. Kim ConDIF, or ComConDIF, paid her $100. Actually, I paid her a $100 bill. She told me it was $60 for a one-hour massage. She led me into the massage room. Once in the room, I just rolled completely and laid down on the massage table. Shortly after I laid down on the table, Ms. ConDIF came back into the room with my change, which was $40, and she placed it on a chair in the room. She left. A short time later, another female goes into the room, who was later identified as last name Rackley, first name Talk. She covered, I was laying face down, and she covered my midsection with a towel. She began massaging my shoulders, my neck area. While she was massaging me, we just kind of engaged in general conversation, you know, just normal conversation. Told me she went by the name of Sunshine, and that she was from South Korea. She continued with the massage, massaged my back, lower part of my legs. And she left the room briefly, and she came back with a towel to wipe off the massage oil. Once she was done wiping off the massage oil, she asked me to flip over onto my back, which I was now facing, facing the ceiling. Once I was on my back, she covered my midsection with the towel, again. Continued to massage my shoulders, my neck. I noticed she kind of made her way towards the head of the bed, all the massage table I was laying on. And as she leaned forward to massage my chest and midsection area, her breasts were basically brushing up against my face. She continued to massage midsection, lower torso area, and then she moved on down to the right side of my thighs and my calves. Moved over to the left side of the table and did the same thing. While she was massaging, we continued to engage in general conversation. And as she finished the massaging on the left side, she leaned really close to me, face to face. I mean, extremely close, and she asked me if I needed anything else. I asked her what she meant as far as needing anything else. And then she said if I was good, and I told her I was good. Then she went back down to the foot of the massage table and began massaging my calf muscles again, inner thighs, and as she was kind of working along my legs from the calf muscles up into the inner thigh, she started massaging around my genitalia, which was still covered with the towel. She slowly removed the towel, exposing my genitals, and she pointed out my penis and said, you like. She slowly removed the towel, exposing my genitals, and she pointed out my penis and said, you like? I told her, told her that I would like. And then she walked over to a table where the massage oils were being kept or sitting on top of. And she put massage oil into her hands. And she made her way back over to the massage table where I was still laying face up. And she actually began blowing air onto my penis with her mouth. And then she reached she reached over to my penis with both of her hands and touched touched my penis. I've sat up on the bed immediately breaking contact. And shortly after that, other members with the vice unit came in and took Ms. Rackley into custody. Once I was dressed, I placed her under arrest for offering to engage in an act of prostitution. And there were other individuals in the massage parlor at the time, including Miss Conde, she was still there. There was another customer there, and I believe two other masseuses in the establishment.
And what was the disposition of your charges?
She pled guilty, I want to say maybe a couple of months later. I want to say the arrest was made in September and in November of twenty seventeen, she pled guilty to one act of offering to engage in an act of prostitution.
Very good. I have no further questions. Counselor, your witness.
Officer, let me let me start off with the last thing. You said she pled guilty?
Yes, Ms. Rackley, R A C K L E Y, first name Tock, T O K.
All right, and this was for one count of help me out here, was one count of engaging in activities?
Offering to engage in an act of prostitution, yes, sir.
And this occurred in two thousand and seventeen?
Yes, it did. September the second of twenty seventeen. I'm sorry, September the sixth of twenty seventeen.
Okay, so all of these activities that you have described all occurred in the year two thousand and seventeen?
My incident, yes. My investigation is take place in twenty seventeen.
Your investigation, all right. And the first part, moving on to the first part of it, you said that she engaged in a massage. Is that correct?
Are we referring to Ms. Rackley?
Yes.
Yes, she was the masseuse during my investigation.
And so the only activities you're saying that she may have done something illegal was blowing air on your genitalia?
No, she actually touched my penis with her hands.
For how long?
Say again?
For how long did she touch your penis?
Probably a second, and I immediately broke contact by sitting up in the massage table.
But after that time, she was doing giving you a massage of your other part of your body, is that correct?
That's correct.
Excuse me, just a second. I have no further questions.
Does any of the board, do any of the board members have questions?
I do have one question. Detective Rivera, you also mentioned that the masseuse removed the towel from your body, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. I have no further questions.
I don't have a question.
I have one more question. What 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 clothes was she was did she have on while conducting the massage?
I don't remember the exact attire she was wearing, but it was regular clothes. It wasn't anything provocative or lingerie or anything like that. Just regular clothes.
Okay, all right. I have no further questions.
Will call Officer High?
Officer High? Officer High was not on the witness list.
Okay. Officer Booth?
Yes, I'm here.
Officer Booth, how are you employed?
For the Oklahoma City Police Department, currently in the data system unit.
How long have you been in that division?
I've been the data system unit for two years, been on the police department for almost twelve.
Are you familiar with the establishment known as King Spa?
Yes.
What brought that to your attention?
I was doing a ninety-day rotation with the vice unit. And it was brought to my attention by another detective that they had tips on this massage parlor.
Right.
On February thirteenth of two thousand and eighteen, I entered the massage parlor as a customer. Greeted by Miss Conde. And she asked if I would like a thirty-minute or hour massage. I told her a thirty-minute massage. She opened the door for me, led me to a massage room. I gave her a hundred-dollar bill. And she said she would return with the change and have one of the girls meet me in the room. I completely disrobed in the massage room, laying face down on the table.
I think so.
A short time later.
We're sorry, go ahead.
Short time later. Last name Choi, she entered the room. She broke or she spoke broken English. Wasn't really much conversation. She started with the massage on my head, worked down my back to my legs. And probably approximately fifteen minutes later, she had me roll over to my back. Again, she started with my head and neck area, down my chest, down both of my legs. At the end of the massage, she had stated she was all finished. She stood there beside the massage bed as I waited for her to leave the room. And she continued to stand there as I was waiting for her to leave so I could get dressed. And as she stood there, she asked if it was okay, and she pointed to my midsection, which was still covered by a towel. And I said, yes, it's okay. So she went to a small table. And she got oil on her hands, came back to the table. And she attempted to use my hand to pull her hand towards my genital area, and I pulled my hand away. And she asked again if it was okay, and I said yes. And simultaneously with both hands, with her left hand, she grabbed my penis with her right hand, she touched my scrotum. And I immediately broke contact and the investigation officers came in the door and we arrested Choi.
Do you know what the results of your charges were?
I'm looking at it right now.
Pardon me?
I'm looking at it right now. She pled guilty to offering to engage in act of prostitution?
Okay, that's all I have. Counselor, your witness.
Excuse me for just a second. This occurred in what, February of two thousand and eighteen?
Yes, February thirteenth.
And and what clothes, what what were the type of clothes that this person was 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 wearing?
I don't recall the clothing that she was wearing.
Okay. And she first started doing the massaging, is that correct? Your your head, your neck, your chest and your thighs?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, later on, is it correct that she, you say she attempted to touch your genitalia?
She did touch.
Okay, and that lasted for how long?
Just as soon as skin-to-skin top contact was made, I broke contact and set up.
Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry. And and so you found out that she was charged with intentional and pled guilty to that, is that correct?
Yes.
Were there any other violations that that she had been charged with?
There was a second count of not having a massage license.
Okay, but she's only had been found guilty of that one charge, is that correct?
Yes.
Excuse me for just a second. I have no further questions.
Do any of the board members have questions?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
Is Lieutenant Kimberlin available?
He was on his way back from Anchorage.
Right. Just one second.
Mr. Wicken Camp, I do see someone that has just signed in as a phone call.
This is Lieutenant Kimberlin.
Okay, proceed. Who's the next name?
Are you talking to Lieutenant Kimberlin? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, that's Dan Brown speaking to Lieutenant Kimberlin. Thank you for joining the call.
Lieutenant Doug Kimberlin.
How are you employed, sir?
A police officer for Oklahoma City.
And how long have you been a police officer in the city of Oklahoma City?
Thirty-three years.
What are your current duties?
Current duties are supervisor with the Special Operations Division.
And Lieutenant Kimberlin, are you familiar with the establishment known as the King's Spa?
Yes, sir.
And how did you come become familiar with that establishment?
On or about the twenty-fourth of August in twenty seventeen, we received a tip regarding prostitution that was ongoing. The tip came through Crime Stoppers, which is a a forum forum for citizens to call in complaints regarding criminal activity. That was collected and forwarded to our unit.
Was there anything else?
We input that that information into our report system and created a tip so we could track it. It was a sign. And and then an undercover investigation was was scheduled.
Do you have a exhibit book in front of you?
I do.
You'll look at exhibit number three. Is that your recommendation to for revocation of the permit or license?
Yes, it is.
And the two boxes that are checked, would you read those, please?
Failure of the licensee or permissory to strictly comply with the provisions of the municipal code or other laws relating specifically to the person, business, activity, device, or machine covered by the permit or license, and failure of the licensee or permissory to substantially comply with all provisions of the municipal code for the regulation and maintenance of the public order, welfare, peace, health, or safety.
And those and those are the reasons why the license was revoked, is that correct?
Those are the reasons why we requested the revocation hearing, yes, sir.
I don't have any further questions for Lieutenant Kimberlin.
Officer Kimber Kimberly, is that correct?
That's Kimberlin.
Kimberlin, I'm sorry. And you indicated that all of this is based on an incident that occurred on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen?
No, sir. There's several incidents that the request is based on.
Okay. So what's my, why do you say that it was we didn't strictly comply with the provisions of the municipal code?
Well, the licensee did not hire employees that were licensed by the state to conduct the act of massage. Oklahoma State law requires that every person who conducts massage in the state of Oklahoma must be bored by the or must be licensed by the Board of Cosmetology, Barberie, and Massage, and none of the individuals who were arrested that we had contacted through our through our investigations from August of twenty seventeen through January of twenty twenty-one were licensed by the state. So she, the licensee, continued to hire persons that were not allowed to contact massage within in the state. And this is, and then you have the prostitution issue, which is what caused the arrest in the original complaint. And this is after she received nuisance notices that the activity was ongoing and and which is inclusive of her actually being at the location when each of these investigations took place. So so even with her knowledge, she elected not to hire fully trained and licensed employees that were allowed to conduct that type of activity. And as such, she was she was therefore conducting an illegal activity.
So the reason why you say that she didn't strictly comply is a license issue, the fact that that you claim that they didn't have a license, is that correct?
That and she was allowing acts of prostitution to occur upon the premise.
And and that, how many how many prostitutions you say she allowed to occur?
Did she allow? We made an arrest on nine sixteen of twenty seventeen. She was she was present and provided the notice. We received another tip. Conducted another operation on two thirteen of twenty eighteen. She was present at the business. Another employee was arrested, so both the first and second employees, neither of those were licensed. Another nuisance notice was was requested, sent and delivered, and then she was also cited for allowing a nuisance to or failure to abate a nuisance on the property, which is the prostitution. Then we got another tip for prostitution on in September of twenty. Conducted another undercover operation where she was present. We arrested another employee who was also not licensed by the state to conduct massage. That's when I issued citations for allowing the operation of a disorderly house. Then we conducted another UC undercover operation, conducted two operations, one in September of 20 and one in January of 21. And the one in January of 21, she was again present. And another employee was arrested who also was not licensed. We generated another nuisance notice. And then subsequent to that, we generated the request to the Chief of Police to request the nuisance notice. So this has been an ongoing issue since 2017.
So you, the number one thing you've got for is not having a license and a nuisance, is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The things that you've gotten are for, that seemed the biggest items were the failure to have a license or being charged with a nuisance, is that correct?
As far as the licensee herself, Mr. Miss Condev, is that?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I'm not sure I understand your question.
All right, you've found her, you've arrested her for her employees not having a license, is that, is that correct?
We arrested the employees for not having a license and for engaging in an act of prostitution.
And you also have the nuisance charge, is that correct?
The nuisance charge was filed against her after she was provided notice that it was present upon the premise and then failed to take any, any action to abate that nuisance.
I have no further questions.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question, Officer Kimberlin. So, and maybe I just didn't get this, but is the nuisance prostitution? Or is the nuisance allowing massages without a license, or is it both?
So the actual nuisance is the prostitution, the act of prostitution itself. So the, the exchange of money that occurred for quid pro quo of a sexual act, that's, that's the actual nuisance. That is a per se nuisance in state law. So that is what allows the city to deem that a nuisance, which is what allows the, our nuisance abatement unit to issue a nuisance notice subsequent to those prostitution arrests. And those are sent to both the licensee of the business and to the property owners. So both are made aware of what's going on in the business and both have an opportunity to correct that behavior. And then, you know, between those, between those complaints, those tip sheets, we monitored that, tried to monitor that business for change in behavior. And, and everybody, every time we went in with another, another tip sheet or complaint from a citizen, we continued to get the same result.
Okay, so after, after each arrest of a masseuse for prostitution, and I have, I have the dates of September of 17, February of 18, September of 20, and January of 21. After each one of those, Miss Condev was given a nuisance citation or notice of violation to correct it, am I understanding that?
Yes, sir, so in September of 27, or 2017, she was present when it occurred. And even though she was present, we still provided her with a written notice, which is required. And then the one that occurred in February of 2018, again, she was present when the violation occurred. And we still provided her another written notice. And that generated the fair to abate the nuisance citation issued by the nuisance abatement unit because she failed to take action from the previous notice and the notice that had just been issued. Then again, in September, we issued, we received another tip. And in August of 20, we conducted the UC operation again from the, from the June tip. She was present when that arrest was made of that employee. And that process again repeated itself. So another nuisance notice was sent and we issued citations to her after they were reviewed by the city attorney's office for maintaining a disorderly house.
Okay, and so after, I guess these cumulative things occurred and were never corrected, that, that's what led to ultimately the request for the revocation of the license.
Yes, yes, sir. So then we had, we had issues with COVID, which kind of interrupted, you know, investigation tempos, which is why there's a lot of delay. We did some other investigation as well. And in January of 21, we did another investigation to see if there was any type of change of behavior or correction of the previous nuisances that we had detected. And again, we, that's when we made the last arrest of the unlicensed employee for prostitution. Again, the licensee was present. We generated another nuisance notice. And then we also generated the request for this revocation hearing because of that particular arrest in, in October of 21. Because since 2017, we had not seen any change or effort to make any change by the licensee.
Okay, thank you.
Do the board members have any other questions? In that case, we rest.
Okay, the city has rested. Mr. Mildred, do you have any additional information you want to present?
He's actually not logged in, he's just called. Richard, are you trying to get back in?
Whatever he asks, I want you to do the response.
We'll see how that goes. You're a pretty hard act to follow. Great.
Hey, Kimberlin showed up. Hey, Rita, you're on, you're not on mute.
Okay, then I'll stop saying all those things I was saying about people. Thank you.
Mr. Brummett, this is Eric Quinger. I do have a, just a question that has come to my mind, can I ask that now?
Sure.
Looking at the information that was provided in the packet, there were a couple of references to the state statute versus the city ordinance.
Yes.
I assume the state statutes apply to the licensing process as well?
Yes.
Okay. And looking at the city ordinance a little bit closer, I'm looking at the requirements for the ash, the actual masseuse to require that the masseuse have a license? Is that something that's in the city ordinance, or is that better found in the state statute?
I think it's in the state and the city ordinance also.
But the state statute applies regardless?
Yes, it does.
So masseuses that, that operate, not just the owner, but the actual massage therapist is required to have a license?
That's correct.
Yes, through the state, Eric. They superseded us a few years ago, so we can no longer license the therapist anymore.
Okay, so the state does that?
Right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
They're trying to get back in, I don't know where they fell out, but I told them, Richard, are you here?
We're here.
Okay, good. I don't know where you left off, Richard, and what you last heard, so we may have to back up a little bit.
Okay, we're trying to start audio or video, I don't know if you had video prior to.
Cindy, is their video working?
Yeah, we're just about.
Can you hear us okay? There we are.
Hey. Hey, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I have no further questions.
Say again.
I have no further questions of Officer Kimberley.
The city has rested its case. And so do you have any additional information or testimony that you want to present to the board?
Could we step out of my office for about five minutes just to talk with our client? I'm not going to touch anything because I don't want to screw it up, but I want just to have a minute or two, if that's okay?
I think that's appropriate, any objection from city legal?
Appreciate it very much, we'll be right back.
Okay.
Let's go in the other room.
Cindy, they said five minutes, so I'm going to step away. I'll probably be back before five minutes is up.
Okay.
Cindy, I'm back. I'm back, Cindy.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Steve.
Can you all hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
You're talking to the group in the screen there.
Mr. Wickencamp, since we took a five-minute break, it appears that our board members are on the meeting and we're in quarrel.
Okay, very good. All right, Mr. Mildred, please proceed.
This is Richard Mildred, counsel. And our, the applicant is going to, I'm going to ask her a few questions. And if you need her to ask it, you know, talk again, please let us know. She's, we'll get closer. State your name for the record, please. State, tell them who you are.
Excuse me. My name, Kung Condev.
Can you, can you all hear that well?
Yes.
All right. And are you the owner of the King's Spa?
Yeah, I own another King's Spa.
Talk slowly, because sometimes I have a hard time. And what were one of your activities as owner of King's Spa in terms of educating the staff? How, how, what, what did you do as owner?
Oh, I got.
Tell them what you did. Don't tell me, tell them what you did.
I got operated at the King Spa, and I tell the girl nothing to do, just to street the massage.
Did you educate the girls?
Yeah, they gotta do.
Did you? Did you train the girls?
I don't train the girl.
Okay.
I asked her, you know, how to massage. They say yes.
Okay. And what happens if one of the girl, excuse me, one of the girl did something improper? What did you do?
And I say I can't give a job. I got fired.
So you fired them, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there anything you'd like to tell the board? I, I have no further questions.
The board members, I don't have nothing. Does board members, any question?
Yeah, I just have a question. I think she said, I think she said that they needed a license to do the massage. I'm not sure. She indicated, she indicated they needed some kind of qualification.
Is that correct?
I don't understand.
That's the licensing of the girl. Did that happen? You need to tell the gentleman.
Oh, no, have license. She say she know how to do. That's all. I hired her.
Okay, you, you hired her because she said she knew how to do massage?
Yes.
But you didn't verify whether, whether your employees actually had the proper license to do massage?
I tell girl not make it trouble.
I think that's correct.
So I take that as a no?
No, yes.
Yes, that's a no.
And on, and on these, these ladies that had the, did these extra things to their clients, you had no knowledge of that?
Did you know what the girls, any prostitution occurred?
I don't know.
So you don't know, okay.
The customer and the girls, the room, I can go inside, sit down. I don't know.
Okay.
But you were, did you receive a nuisance, notice of a nuisance violation for those acts beginning back in 2017? 2017, 2018, 2020, 2021 nuisance?
She has an answer, sir. He'll tell the gentleman.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you get your answer?
I did.
All right.
I have a follow-up question to the one that was just asked. So upon receipt of those nuisance violations, what action did you take?
Once you got the notice, what did you do?
You know, I got to take it.
What? You took it to the lawyers? Evidently, she took it to the lawyers. I was not her counsel at that time.
So she did not visit with the employees? She did not train or provide any additional information to them once she received the notices?
I don't train to the girl.
Okay. I don't have any additional questions.
Mr. Mildred, do you have anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay, City Legal, do you have anything further?
Yes, this is Rita Tally, and the question I have is from Miss Conde. You had described that you told the girls not to make trouble. So once you got the notice of violation indicating that there was trouble, that there was a problem, you said that you took the notice of violation to the lawyers. But what did you do at your spa to make sure that the girls were not doing the things that the notice of violation said that they should not?
Did you, did you take any, tell her, tell her what you did.
She got a trouble and I fire her.
So when the next person did the same thing, did you change anything about the way that you supervised them?
And I fired her though. I got a trouble.
So every time a person was arrested, they got fired?
Yes, I can't keep it. They got a trouble. First time she come work, I tell her nothing to do trouble.
And so when they got in trouble, you fired them. And then when the next person was hired, what did you do to make sure that that next employee would not do the same thing?
They say they want to come to work. They want a job. They say not make it trouble. Right? She come to the work. I don't know what they do in room.
Is there a way that you could monitor what they do so they would not get in trouble?
Just so massage.
Yes, but if they were doing anything other than massage, is there a way that you could monitor them, a way that you could watch what they do to be sure, to be sure that they didn't get in trouble, that they didn't do something you told them not to do?
We don't have any camera.
So, beginning in 2017, the notice of violation was sent to you, correct?
The notice, the notice of violation, did you get it?
Yeah.
All right, she got it.
And you got the violation because you're the owner of the spa, is that correct?
Yes.
And as owner of the spa, you're responsible for what goes on at the spa, correct?
You're in charge at the spa?
Yeah.
All right, and you?
Yes, I'm charging the spa.
So since you're in charge of the spa, anything that happens there is your responsibility, correct?
Who's in charge?
I charge.
Well, you need to tell, yeah.
I charge her.
Since you're in charge of it, then it's up to you to make sure that they don't get in trouble.
Make, who makes sure they're not in, they don't get in trouble?
Yes, and not make it trouble. I tell her. And the.
Tell them what?
Okay, come to massage the customer. And he try to make her trouble.
The customer?
Custom and change her mind. Okay, and also, and the policeman come there.
So she wants to know, what did you do to someone who had broken, you know, maybe had done something wrong?
I know the customer changed the girl's mind.
That we're not, okay.
So did you have any kind of training for your employees? You have meetings with your employees to say, don't do this.
Yeah.
Do this, but don't do that.
Yes, I train her.
So what did you tell them to do if a customer said, I want something extra?
Yeah.
What did you tell them to do?
I tell the girls, say no.
So then if the customer insists, what are they supposed to do? What is your employee supposed to do if the customer says, oh, come on, I'll give you 50 extra dollars? What are they supposed to do?
Just want to tell the girls to know. And girls, the customer make her change mind, you know?
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Conde.
You're welcome.
Your answers.
I have no further questions.
Have any questions? Yes, this is Detective Rivera with Oklahoma City Police. I was wondering if we were able to make, allowed to make comments based off of what we're hearing here.
It would be rebuttal.
Yeah, I'd rather, I, I don't know what you're intending to give here, and I'd rather. I, I, I don't know.
It was just an observation to one of the answers that Miss Conde answered, and, and we just have here, we have here in our reports.
Let me just, let me just pause you there because I want to get an opinion here from City Legal.
I would, I would just assume, Pat, but go ahead.
It is rebuttal, but and I'm going to call you Officer Rivera. Would you email me, please, the gist of your testimony?
Let me grab a pen real quick.
Okay.
Okay, what was that email?
Rita, R-I-T-A dot douglas, D-O-U-G-L-A-S hyphen tally, T-A-L-L-E-Y at OKC dot G O V. And I can review your comment with Mr. Brunet and see whether we need to bring rebuttal.
I will send that here in a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mildred, do you have, do you have anything else pending?
No, sir. No, sir.
Board members, you have any other questions at this time? Okay. We'll give him, we'll give him a minute here.
Mr. Wickencamp?
Yes.
Do you mind if we take another five-minute recess?
No, it's okay with me.
Thank you.
Okay, five-minute recess. Mr. Mildred?
Yes, sir.
I just want to bring to your attention, you're not muted. So.
No, I'm not leaving.
We might be able to overhear a conversation that you don't want us to hear. Just wanted to bring to your attention.
Okay, thank you. I'll shut up. Thank you for helping me.
Okay, we're, we're back.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Ms. Conde another question if the board will allow.
Can you hold just one second?
Yes.
Cindy, can you, can you affirm all the boards present again? For quorum since we took a break?
Yes, I see Mr. Winger, Mr. Bryant, and Mr. Wickencamp. So you have your quorum.
Okay, thank you. Go, go ahead, Rita.
Thank you for checking that. What I wanted to ask Ms. Conde was about a statement she made before the break. She indicated that if an employee, and I'm not saying it quite the way she did, but if an employee did not follow her rules, they were fired.
Yes.
So the follow-up question to that is whether or not any of those employees that were fired were rehired.
If the ones that got fired, did you rehire them? Did they go back to work for you? Yeah. Was it, tell the lady?
No.
So none of the employees that you fired at any time for not following your rules have come back to work there?
No.
Yes? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mildred, do you have anything further?
No, other than, other than I wish the board would grant her a license.
Okay, and, and I think you, I lost you just slightly. Can you restate? You'd like, you'd like the board to reinstate the license?
I appreciate the board's attention, and at this time, we think we best decision would be to grant the application for license to operate and better be more careful in time, maybe of where she, you know, should have been a little bit more careful or let her demonstrate that. We thank you for any of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City Legal, do you have anything further?
We do not.
Okay. So that being the case, the board will make a decision about the, the the request to overturn the revocation. Is my understanding that this board either modify, affirm, or set aside the decision to revoke the license? Do we have any discussion from board member concerning this matter?
Chairman, I think, you know, from my observation, the biggest concern that I have, and it includes the responses from the business owner, is that the owner is not practicing the checking for licenses before employees are hired, which is a requirement of the state and of the city ordinance. And it seems to be that that has been as current as January of 2021, where employees were arrested for reasons including not having a license. So at this point, that's my biggest concern is it doesn't appear to be a method for correcting that, and it seems to be one of the issues that's been ongoing for some time, is the continual hiring of massage therapists without a license.
Mr. Bryant, you have any comments? Discussion?
I'm with Mr. Winger on what he has said, and then the other thing is the consistent pattern of improper actions at the, at the parlor, at the, the location concerns me too, so that's about all I have to say.
Okay, and, and I would add this comment that, you know, this is, has occurred over a period of years, and the applicant had received notification that it was occurring, and yet, you know, appears no corrective action was taken or any, anything that was effective to stop it. And so, and those were the, those were the prostitution nuisances. So she was informed multiple times about those. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to either affirm, set aside, or modify the revocation of the license.
I'll make the motion to affirm the revocation.
I'll make the motion to affirm the revocation.
And I second, and, and the second comes with, it's a violation of Chapter 28 of the Oklahoma Municipal Code. Twenty-eight dash seventy-seven, Section D is where I'm referencing that, is the owner knowingly not providing for licenses for massage therapists.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to affirm the revocation. Because we're on a Zoom, we're, we're gonna do a vote by voice. If you're in favor of this motion, I guess aye is the proper language. Mr. Bryant, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Winger?
Aye.
Chairman also votes aye for affirming the revocation. So Chapter 2623, duty of the License Appeals Board specifies that the board's decision in modifying, affirming, or setting aside the revocation or suspension will be made in writing to the licensee or permittee. A copy of the decision shall also be maintained by the city clerk, and a copy will be given to the supervisor of the licenses. Does anyone have anything else?
Of course.
Okay, so with that, this hearing is concluded. Thank you all for, for participating and your help. Thank you.
Thank you.